Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 7th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution, the liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Genthor, can we have a roll call, please? Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
Mary Waite?
Here.
Kathleen Amaral?
Here.
John Noons?
Yep.
Chris Oliver?
Here.
I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being streamed on the DHS TV Media YouTube channel. You can find that at youtube.com/DHSTVMedia. The meeting will also be rebroadcast on DCTV, channel 9, on Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. It will also be rebroadcast on Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at noon and Thursday at 3:00. And I'd just like to remind our audience members and committee members, I always forget to silence your cell phones if you have them. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is public comment. We've set aside 10 minutes for public comments on any of the items that are on our agenda for the evening. If you would like to make a comment, I welcome you to step up to the microphone, state your name, and share your thoughts, please. All right, so if we have no takers, going once, going twice? All right, so the next item on our agenda is the approval of the regular session minutes for February 14th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Noons and a second by Ms. Amaral. Is there any further discussion on that issue? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. So that motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is our student representative report. And Evan Garcia is joining us again. And Evan, I understand this is going to be your last meeting with us.
Yeah, it is.
All right, well, we'll let you go and then we'll say nice things about you after you're done talking. So we'll let you go first.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Since coming back from February vacation, students and staff have successfully adjusted to our school's new optional masking policy. Additionally, our extremely successful winter sports season is wrapping up. Several of our track athletes competed at state-level meets while three school records were broken. James Martin broke the 55-meter record not once but twice, and Mia Carter, Kate Smith, Madison Stott, and Sorel Lawton all beat the 4x200 relay record. Our girls' basketball team qualified for the MIAA tournament and had an outstanding victory last week against Burlington High. Their season ended with a fierce match against top-seeded Norwood High School. Our boys' basketball team's season is also over after many competitive and action-packed games. Our hockey team ended their regular season by winning the Spartan-- Spartan Cup and qualifying for the MIAA tournament. They defeated Westwood High School on Saturday in an extremely intense game. They will be facing Ducksbury High School at 7:20 on Wednesday at The Bog in Kingston, Massachusetts, in what will be a must-watch game. Great job to all of our winter student athletes for what was a phenomenal season. Last week was both busy and exciting for our TV media program, which hosted WPRI 12's Kate Walsh on Friday to talk to our students about what it's like to work in the media. On Saturday, the students then visited Harvard University to watch the production of the Harvard versus Dartmouth basketball game. Our DECA team has been very successful recently as well, and they are currently hard at work in preparation for their state conference, which will be held this Thursday. Good luck to all of those competing. Our Illumineers Robotics team placed seventh out of 20th in their qualifying competition, while the consistently-inconsistent, their word, not mine, robotics team placed third in that competition as well. That robotics team then had a great performance at their state-level competition last week, in which they finished seventh out of 32 teams. TEDx DHS is returning to Dartmouth High School later this month. It's scheduled for Friday, March 21st right now, uh, excuse me, Friday, March 25th right now, but the official date will be released later this week. Community members can watch our students present their talks on DHS TV Media's YouTube page. Students can now sign up for spring athletics with offerings in unified track, spring track, tennis, softball, baseball, lacrosse, and sailing. Informational meetings will be held during pace and after school this week and next week. Tomorrow, Dartmouth High School hosts Dartmouth Middle School's eighth graders, the future class of 2026, so that they can go on student-led tours and hear directly from students about courses and activities here at DHS. This is just one aspect of Dartmouth High School's efforts to support the transition from middle school to high school. Dartmouth's finest will be held on March 18th at 6:30 PM in the DHS auditorium. We have 14 contestants this year and a variety of talents, and I promise you that this will be a great show that you won't want to miss. You also don't want to miss the National Honor Society's volleyball tournament. It will be held on Tuesday, March 15th, in the gym. Last but not least, the Dartmouth Education Association is hosting their spelling bee on March 24th at 7:00 PM. I can promise that it will be amazing. This is my final school committee meeting as Dartmouth High's student representative, and I want to thank all of you for your kindness and support over the last two years. I have really enjoyed serving as a voice for Dartmouth High School during such a consequential period. Thank you again, and that concludes my final update.
Thank you, Evan. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Go ahead, Kathleen, you want to start?
Yeah, you've been, it's always wonderful to hear the way in which you describe what's going on in the high school. And I was just sitting here sort of listening to every little word that you were saying. You know, and my oldest is already, she's 20 now, and it just dawned on me, not that, not literally, but we're in, we're in the spring, you know, we're coming onto the spring and into the spring, and after the last couple of years we've had, you know, my life used to revolve around what sport she played or what activity she was in, what club she was in, from, you know, the fall, the winter, and the spring. And, you know, I have a sixth grader, and so I look forward to that coming up, however she chooses to participate. But yeah, it's just great to hear you talk about all of the wonderful accomplishments and the activities that, that students are participating in. And your service has been wonderful for our committee, the way in which you describe, like I said. I really look forward to seeing how you move into the world and, and the future service that you will, you know, the contribution you'll make to, to our community and the greater community, whatever that looks like. You know, the future looks pretty bright for you, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, so I was able to chat with you a little bit before the meeting was going, so Evan has committed to Holy Cross, which I think is really exciting. And I was curious, do you have a major picked out?
I want to double-major in political science and history, yeah.
Yes. So as a former history teacher, yay. And I know you've already started, clearly you're started showing a talent for that work. And again, I know your work over the summer as an intern at Mr. McGuinness's office, so I, I think, yeah, you're off to a great start. We really can't wait to see, you know, what happens. We hope you get back to Dartmouth and maybe someday sit in one of these seats, you know, as, as part of that process. But we're, we're really proud of you and thankful for all you've done and contributed over the last two years. So thank you.
Mr. Noons?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Evan, congratulations and all the best to you. It's been a pleasure, you know, watching you over the past couple of years, as you've given the report, you've brought us a lot of information, which is very much, you know, appreciated as to what's going on at the high school. And just want to take an opportunity to wish you good luck at Holy Cross next year. You know, just remember you're a thousand feet in the air, so it's a lot colder there than it is here.
Yeah, I know.
And you get more snow than we do here, so.
I know, I look at, I look at the weather app sometimes and I get concerned. Too late now.
Yeah, it's too late now. That's it. But seriously, you know, wish you nothing but the best and, you know, make us proud, which I know you will do, and come back and see us.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you. Well, congratulations. As my colleagues have said, I wish you the best, Evan. It's been a pleasure having you with us. Certainly learned a lot about what's happening throughout the months at Dartmouth High School. I just, I have a question for you. I hope that's okay. I'm putting you on the spot.
That's definitely okay.
With your experience here, being sitting up here, what's your biggest takeaway? Do you have any takeaways from this experience of serving to, to represent Dartmouth High School to the committee?
Yeah, well, I mean, this is a political body, and I think when you think of politics today, it's so divisive. I mean, when you look at CNN and Fox News or whatever you watch, there's so much, you know, just division. And I think it's really nice to see that, even when you all disagree, you can always respect each other and really, you know, work hard to make the school system a better place for all of the students. So I just really appreciate all of the work you guys put in as well. So, thank you.
That was very complimentary. I didn't, I didn't set him up for that. Well, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate those, those words, and best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks. I have to laugh. I was doing reading today about student success, and one of the things that recommended that, when you are, when students are engaged in co-curricular activities, you ask them to do like a one-minute writing or speaking exercise. And one of the things you are supposed to ask them as a best practice is, what's the biggest takeaway? How does this tie? So, Mr. Oliver is engaging in best educational practices without even knowing it. But, you know, I'm, I'm very glad that you've been part of this committee. I appreciate your updates and your input on important issues. And, you know, as we've had conversations about a student representative, you're just the kind of student that I've thought would be great to have at the table. Someone who is interested in history and politics and is looking to do that for their career. I think it is a great opportunity or something to be able to put on your resume. I hope you have put this on your resume, that you've served in this role, because it is a good taste of sort of what local politics is all about. So we appreciate you being here. I hope it was somewhat useful for you, and thank you very much for your service.
Yeah, as I said, thank you so much for having me.
Thanks. Have a good night, Evan.
All the best.
All right, so the next item on our agenda is the spotlight on kids at Dartmouth Middle School. I'll allow Dr. Gifford to introduce. I think Mr. Rossi's here.
Yes, exactly. So tonight we have Assistant Principal, Mr. Pete Rossi, with Adam Desjardins and Jamie Guyle, so they'll be presenting the good stuff that is going on at Dartmouth Middle School.
We'll let the crew get assembled here. Thank you very much for the opportunity. We, we appreciate this chance to put the spotlight on our engineering and technology program this evening. We've got about a 10-minute presentation for you. I'm going to make some introductions, and then I'm going to get out of the way and let the talent take over. To steal a phrase from Mr. Noons, this, this program is living the dream presently, and we want to share with you all of the things that are going on within the classroom and the after-school programs as well. So with the eighth grade tonight, if you could just raise your hand when I, when I call it, we have Kelsey Riley, we have Seth Vasconcellus, we've got Brian Wee, we've got Lily Scaripone, and we've got Ahmad Rami. I'm going to hand this over now to Mr. Desjardins and Mr. Jamie Guyle, as they are the teachers here for this program.
Pleasure. Thank you very much, school committee, for hosting us, and thank you to our building admin as well. Before I let these students talk, because that's who we really want to hear from, before I begin, though, I just want to talk about our partnership with the Navy, the Naval Undersea Warfare Center Education Division. We work out of the branch out of Newport, Rhode Island. That branch has been absolutely fantastic for us. We have so far brought in a total of about over $40,000 in terms of educational materials, technology, tools, all sorts of wonderful things. They've also brought with us a, oh, probably about five or six different engineers that have come in, have taught the students a lot of various things in some of the after-school programs. They've also helped with our partnership with First Robotics, the same First Robotics that operates here at the high school. We run the lower division into there. We operate a really nice feeding program to help feed the high school. And the program's been absolutely wonderful. It teaches kids a lot of great, wonderful skills, a lot of awesome leadership skills. But even then, just life skills on using tools, you know, teaching kids how to use power tools is always a very interesting endeavor, as you can imagine. And I, I love every second of it, as does Mr. Guyle. So we can't talk enough about how great that program is. I'm just going to pass it off to Mr. Guyle, who'll speak a few things, and then we're going to have some of our students come up and talk about the great things that they do. Thank you.
Yeah, so before, before we have the kids come up, I'm going to leave this up here for you guys, so you can just use this one. I just want to say it's been nice to have everybody's support, our admin, the Navy, the Dartmouth Education Foundation. When we have new ideas, we want to change what we're doing with our curricula. You know, we want to get new stuff. There always seems to be someplace to get it, and it's not a matter of if we can do it, it's when. So that's been, it's been really nice. And now we'll have the kids tell you about some of the things that we've been doing.
Okay. Okay, so in seventh grade, we learned about forces, the forces that act on bridges that, that are basically everywhere. So like, we learned about torsion, torsion tension, shear, and compression. Our project was to build a bridge like this that could hold upwards of like 60 pounds, which is insane, once you consider that this bridge is entirely made of balsa wood, which is the flimsiest thing on planet Earth. So we had, so we had to do that. It was really fun to learn about the different types of bridges. We built a truss bridge, which has this pattern on it. Yeah, and it was insane to see how much these bridges could hold. Like, when we put them under the press, they started collapsing after 40, 50, 60 pounds. And it was really fun, overall fun process to do.
So in eighth grade, we were tasked with designing a multi-tool. We acted like designers that were hired by Idea, which is the rip-off version of IKEA. And the whole point of the project was to come up with a tool that would be shipped with the furniture that Idea sold. There were certain requirements that we had to follow, and it had to be like a certain size, and it had to have the logo on it. It also had to kind of be small and practical so that it could come with the parts. TinkerCad was used to design the tools, and then we later tested them in class to make sure that they were functional, which is what this is.
So in seventh grade, we were also learning about the different forms of communication. One of those forms is smartphones. I'm sure most people have them, and it's a very good form of communication. And so we are designing them on TinkerCad, which is like a 3D printing, sort of. And it's so fun to design them, because like, you can like experiment with it and like play with it, play around with it. It's also fun to like design stuff with different things. For example, if you're designing it for a photographer, you need to include more like storage. If you're designing it for a teenager, also more storage. So this is one of the example phones. I'm not really sure.
So they have, they're just doing the project the first time, and that one's not quite complete. But if you could see it up close, it has all the ports, and they decided where the buttons go. Eventually, it'll have a color screen on it, just for a kid.
And at the end of the project, we're also going to make a short commercial trying to sell the phone to our specific group.
So this is going to be a model house, and this is kind of like an unfinished model for it. So right now, we just have the back wall and two of the side walls. We're not completely finished. This is going to be the top part of it with the roof. There's going to be like trusses that run across the roof to support it, make sure it doesn't collapse. There's also subflooring and this, I forget the name of it. The joists of the, of the floor, the flooring, so it doesn't collapse as well. The walls don't really have anything else except the skinning for it. That's pretty much else that's going to be added to it. There's going to be no other, it's like ceiling, it's going to be an open ceiling on the house. And what is it? There's only going to be a few windows and a door. There's four roles to the designing of this house. There are the contractor, lead carpenter, designer, and structural engineer. I'm the designer of the project out of the four people that I'm working with, and my job is to design the furniture of the house. And the furniture will be used to test if the base of the house is going to keep them up. And I'm going to be using a website called TinkerCad to 3D-model them and print a lamp, a side table, and a little couch. And we'll be using like a Quaker, kind of, to put the house on with the furniture inside, and it'll shake the stuff around, see if it will work. So that was the main objective of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Sea Purge is one of the few after-school programs that are offered in the middle school. And currently, we're building underwater robots with naval engineers, and it's a really fun experience, and you really get to appreciate how much effort engineers put into the stuff that they're making. You get to use power tools, and you learn about electro, electris, electrical engineering. It's extremely hands-on, and I believe you learn a lot as you advance through the building steps. Everyone in the after-school program always looks like they're enjoying themselves.
We all met in the fall in, to compete in FLL, which is called the First Lego League, competition that happens yearly. Because of the limited number of teams due to pandemic, FLL was canceled this year. So we hosted a competition with regional teams at the middle school, and we placed in second. This fall, the tasks were based on transporting cargo. We split, we all split up into three groups and built different parts for different tasks on the table. Here's an example of one of the tasks we did.
So the table is usually much bigger than this. We just brought--
Stand up closer to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Don't do this every night. So the table is much bigger. There's usually not a lot more tasks. So rather than bring the whole thing and take the time to set it up, we just brought the engine part of the tasks, where the robot needs to turn the engine over. So he's got to run that.
I think if you put it maybe right up, could you put it right up here so we could see it?
Yeah, right over here.
Up close view.
Probably, but that's okay.
That's great.
So one of the team members that couldn't be here tonight, Rio Falk, built this real quick, because the, you know, we're not meeting right now, and we wanted something to bring, so. So this is, this is Rio.
That concludes the presentation. If you have any questions for the kids or the teachers, feel free.
Mr. Noons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just curious, the, the bridge, did it hold 60 pounds?
Yes, it did. In fact-- Can I ask anyone who answered the question to step up to the microphone so our people in the audience can hear us and the home audience? Thank you.
Yes, it did hold up 60 pounds. In fact, I think the record was 80, 88 pounds for the bridge.
Just that size?
Yeah, just this size.
Thank you. Good job.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So I love to hear, anytime there's collaboration happening, I think that's an awesome thing, and to, to have this kind of relationship that you do, it sounds like with the Naval Undersea Program, and to have those engineers come in and speak to you in addition to bringing in funds or, or materials for the projects is, is wonderful. I guess my question is, is, so I, I heard an after-school program, and then I also heard this is part of the, the class as well. So can we just speak to the differences, like what, what is done in the classroom versus specifically the after-school programs that's offered?
Sure, absolutely. So currently, the Navy, since the hardware that they provide us, a lot of 3D printers, later, laser cutters, tools, things like that, that's primarily used mostly in the classroom. In terms of engineers coming in, we come in, we have a couple of different after-school programs. We do have the Robotics Lego League that we talked about. We have the underwater robots. We also run a marble course, which is a little different, but a lot of physics and engineering that we use for that. And then also, the Navy this year has added in a metal jewelry working class, where kids are actually firing their own metal and making their own jewelry pieces.
Very cool.
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Anytime.
And great presentation to all of you.
Yeah, I just wanted to extend on that. So how did this program and this relationship with the Navy, how did that, how was that established? I think, I mean, I think it's clearly amazing, and I have to imagine it came from your initiative, so I'd love to hear a little bit more.
Yeah, so thankfully for myself, I, you know, the man with connections, supposedly. When I was in college, I was actually doing a lot of underwater robotics things, and I was able to partner up with them. It also helped, too, that I have a parent that worked at the Navy base at the time. So I was able to get involved with that. And then over time, especially, you know, with our classroom, I just was thrilled with the stuff they were doing in stuff, New Bedford, Fall River, Newport Public Schools. And I decided I kind of wanted to bring it over here, and they were more than willing to help us out.
Well, I'm very glad you have those connections. So thank you for, it sounds like a great program. It looks like everyone's enjoying it like tremendously. I mean, it's, to me, it's, you know, again, it speaks to that hands-on, you know, really, I mean, you're combining so many different elements, the physics and the math, and then, you know, again, using hand tools. I mean, just that for a, I mean, I'm not sure anybody would trust me around us all, so I'm just really impressed by everything that these, you know, these kiddos are doing. I'm, you know, it's, it's really exciting to hear, and the skills that they're going to come into the high school with. So thank you for all your hard work, and kids, keep having fun.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I really, not much to add to what my colleagues have, have shared, but what I was most impressed with being uncomfortable public speaking, the ability for you to, sure, you had some notes, but most of you didn't even look at your notes, and even if you did, good for you, because that's what they're there for. But you clearly were, are so engaged and interested and, and just, you know, living and breathing this, these activities and this, this learning that you're doing. I was quite impressed with your ability to articulate your project and, and kind of coming back to, maybe you forget a word, and then it's, it's there, and you know it because you're doing it, and that was quite impressive for middle school students. And very good. That's all.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was really fun to hear from you all. It sounds like some really exciting projects, and I'm glad to see you all working on these things and engaging the students with this, this kind of work. It's super important. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Thank you. Have a great night, guys.
Have a great night, guys.
And then our students, you don't have to stay. If you'd like to leave, you're welcome to leave if your ride is here or whatnot. You're welcome to go at any, at any point in time. You don't have to stay. You're welcome to go.
Yeah, we know you have a busy night.
It's really okay. All right, so the next item on our agenda is old business with the fiscal year twenty-three budget. I will turn it over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So, during the budget discussion at the last school committee meeting on February fourteenth, the committee asked for some additional information. I provided the committee with information regarding enrollment trends going back twenty years. I provided you with the breakdown of the ESER funding. There was also a question regarding health insurance. And we have some, I guess, fairly positive news that we've received since, since that last meeting that the increase for next year will be two-point-two percent. So, it is an increase, but it could be worse.
Could be worse, yeah.
Yep. You had also asked for job descriptions regarding the directors of teaching and learning. And Dr. Gifford provided those to you. So, I guess first, I mean, we'd be happy to discuss any budget information, questions you might have. But certainly, you know, we could address any of those particular documents as well that we provided.
Mr. Nunes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kylie, for the information and Dr. Gifford for the two job descriptions. I don't have a problem with either one of the job descriptions. I thought they were very thorough. It was great to see that there's cross-referencing between both of them. You know, working in tandem and overseeing each other. You know, the ESER grants, I think, you know, is, you know, that funding is, where it's going is kinda basically, I think, what we talked about back in the fall. And I think at that time, we talked about the fact that it was gonna be a fluid document depending where it ended up and what we had to do. So, you know, I'm, I'm good with that. Question I have is, have you heard anything from CIP Committee yet?
Nothing.
Nothing? Interesting.
I have, I actually, the Director of Budget and Finance for the town did reach out to me regarding meeting with the finance committee on the budget, not on capital. And at, at this point, I said, well, we, you know, the school committee has yet to really have any significant amount of discussion or deliberation regarding the budget. We wouldn't be ready yet. And that I'd let them know when we might be. But I certainly don't wanna jump in, you know, a, a finance committee meeting without you folks having had the opportunity to, you know, to weigh in and, and make sure that we answer any questions that you might have. So, so that's where we are with that. I, the, Mr. Barnes did promise me a, a town financial projection, which I expect any time now, but I, I hope and I'd have it for tonight, but I don't have it. Which, you know, is an important item.
Yeah.
For context.
Okay. Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
Other questions?
I haven't.
Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. So, thank you for providing all the information, Dr. Gifford, as well as Mr. Kylie for all the requests that we had. My questions overseeing, looking at the two new positions that we're breaking up, well, the one position that we're breaking up to two. Just a couple of, just a couple of thoughts on this is, I see in the line item budget that one's budgeted at one-twenty and the other one's at one-sixteen, I believe. Is that, is that what we're thinking for the salary range? Is that the max salary range? Where, where are we at at that?
No, we're actually thinking more than that. And as I said to you in an email, we put an estimate, an estimate in the budgets for various positions, but depending on obviously who applies, the credentials they have, the experience, it could certainly increase by that. And Mr. Kylie's making adjustments and room for that.
So, where would the additional funding be coming from? Are they grant, for grants or, because it's budgeted in the, in the operating budget, the lines at one-sixteen and one-twenty?
So, actually, so, the, the budget lines historically for the Director of Teaching and Learning salary are net of, are net of grant funding. So, I mean, it might be helpful for me to provide a breakdown for you so you can understand where it was in, in the FY twenty-two budget. Because what we budgeted in FY twenty-two was for an assistant superintendent. That was at the time, the, the, you know, thought in our request, less grant funding. So, we actually only budgeted a hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-two operating budget for that position. We then, in FY twenty-three, have budgeted for Mrs. Olivera's salary up until when she leaves in mid-September. The two position, new positions. And then, less, less grant funding. So, reduced by grant funding. So, I can provide you with a little breakdown of that just so you can visualize it. It's actually pretty easy if you put it on paper, but not as easy if you don't know, you know, you have to talk it through. But, so, I'd be happy to provide that for you.
Okay. So, just a couple more things. So, so with that being said, because these are, I'm, first of all, I'm all for these positions. I, I think they're needed. I love the idea of breaking them up. I think that makes a lot of sense. Have we done, because these are new positions and, you know, we oversee the policy and the budget, has there been any kind of salary surveys done for curriculum directors?
I'm trying to remember. We have access to that through the Mass Association usually.
Okay.
I can't remember if I looked at that recently, like last year or really haven't, to tell you the honest truth.
Okay.
No. Not in preparation for this.
Not in preparation.
Right.
I, I'd kinda, I'd kinda like to see that because I, I just, I have some serious concerns with, with salaries. And it seems as, and this is nothing against anyone, it just seems to be that there's starting to become as, as two percent on say, a step five or six teacher versus two percent on a high-level administrator is a big difference. And it seems to be that there's a growing disparage, disparity between our administrators and our teachers. And I wouldn't, I honestly, you know, with some of the research that I've done, I wouldn't be comfortable going over, you know, one-twenty-five. That's just me, I'm only one, one member. But I, I've, you know, at some point, we've got to really, really carefully look at these salaries. And the other thing was that I had said, I mentioned to you, Dr. Gifford, was, once again, just me, just my thoughts for what it's worth is I'd love to see these positions, you know, that be based out of whether it's the high school, middle school, as well as one of the, one of the elementary schools and maybe have a day which they report to Bush Street. But I, you know, in my experience, I see curriculum directors working really diligently and hard with, with billing administrators as well as teaching staff. So, I would like to see them out in the field as much as possible.
I, I'm glad you explained it because as I said to you, I'm like, I really don't get what you're talking about. Because the person is, the people now are housed at central office because they do so much more work with central office as well. Like, especially even professional development planning, meeting with our leadership team, like it's in and out of offices all day long. I'm part of that as well, especially since Michelle left. The residency reporting, supervision, just there's so many different tasks that happen. But as far as being in the buildings, currently, of course, we just have Tracy. You know, she does attend staff meetings, she'll go to the CPT meetings, she'll attend the teacher leader meetings at the high school, et cetera. So, she is involved in, in that kind of work already without being physically in a building at all times. So, I just think as a, you know, if, if they weren't in our building, then I'm down, way down in people. I wouldn't have, you know, Michelle's gone, so if you take the two that were trying to build out, they're gone. It's just, then I'd be running back and forth to buildings and working, so.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but the work itself does happen in the buildings as well, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Are we, do we need to vote on these, on these job descriptions? Because you put together the draft, you sent us the information, but at some point-
I did, and I did post them today, to tell you the truth. But, I'm not sure.
We're creating new, creating new positions.
It's kind of a split position, so I guess you could to make it official. That'd be great, yeah.
Would you like to make that motion now? Do we want to do that now? For those, for those job descriptions?
Sure.
They were pretty good.
I'll make the mo- I'll make the motion that we approve the, the two new job positions for the element, the primary and then the secondary Directors of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Mr. Nunes. Is there any discussion on that item?
I would just ask, at what point is this committee gonna set parameters for salaries on these two new positions?
I just have to say, I do have fear on that. Because again, if I speak about, my hope is that people in-house are gonna apply. And I know what you're saying, but with the contracts that have, have, have been negotiated, even with the DAA, for example, with the assistant principal role, the disparity that happens between a principal position and that. So, if one of those people applies, they may already be making a certain salary that they're gonna increase their days, their time.
Well, I guess they wouldn't, I understand, Dr. Gifford, but on the flip side, then they, maybe they don't apply for it.
Right. But then we're not growing leaders. I mean, my position is trying to grow good leaders and keep them in the district. And if it takes, you know, that, that's my position.
No, I, I certainly respect it and I appreciate it. I'm just not comfortable in a salary range of one-thirty to one-forty for these positions, I'm not.
Okay. Other comments?
Unfortunately, I'm gonna disagree with my colleague here because, big surprise.
We've done a few things.
Yeah, we have, that's true. I can't remember when, but we have.
It's a good discourse.
But, in all services, I, I think, in no disrespect, you know, the old adage, you pay peanuts, you get monkeys. And I don't mean that in a disrespectful way, but I think we have to leave that salary scale, salary range to, you know, Dr. Gifford and Mr. Kylie to, to see who we've got. Yeah, if, if we're getting a teacher per se, then, you know, the one-sixteen may, one-twenty may work. But if we're getting an administrator who's trying to build into a leadership role, the one-sixteen may not work. So, I think we have to, we have to leave that open-ended and let, just let the chips fall where they may.
I have to say, I agree with John on this one. I just, you know, I think we're, we, we want great people into these roles. We want, and again, I just, I, I think it would be helpful to see what comparative districts are offering. I know you've said you've done a little bit of research there, Chris. By the same token, it's a unique position. I'm not sure that how many other districts are offering this kind of position as well. But I, I think, you know, we get a lot for what we spend in this district. And I think at some point, we, we have to pay for quality folks. Like, I, I, you know, I don't wanna say, across the board. I mean, we have excellent teachers, we have so many people who are working for, in my mind, not enough. But I, I'm worried that if we will lose folks, you know, to your point, to other administrative roles. So, that would be, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to, to limit to, unless I have a little bit more research around what those numbers would be. And if it's really, you know, if, I, I think I wanna hear a little bit more and make sure that we have that openness so you can negotiate like this.
Well, I think we can just approve, I'm fine with the proven job description as is. And then if we can come back with some, some research with it, yeah.
See where we go.
Okay. Samara, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't really have anything much more to add, but I was, I was thinking I did, but you came circle with that. Like, and I was just listening, Chris, and I appreciate what you're saying. You know, you pay peanuts, but we do have excellent, you know, bang for our buck here. And, you know, it could be a, a great opportunity for a teacher to kinda step into this role as a, as a stepping stone as well. And so, I don't wanna limit us on that, in that end as well. But, you know, when we start looking at, we should be across the board in terms of what can we afford and what, what do we, what, how, how do we show our value with what we pay for a position? But then therein lies the disparity, I think, that my colleague is referring to in terms of historically, we, we underpay our, our teachers in this district comparatively. So, I, I would just wanna kinda balance that out.
I would, you know, personally, I was involved in a situation where an external hiring authority tried to clamp down on, on salaries for people coming into a certain role. And then what happened, when you do the math, sometimes you're asking maybe someone to give more time that there, when you add the extra time that they're working in their salary, it doesn't add up to a raise, right? You're actually working more hours and making less money. So, I don't, I don't wanna, wanna hamstring Dr. Gifford on that. You know, I do think developing internal leadership and internal talent is really important. We wanna reward people who do good work in this district. That having been said, I do understand Mr. Oliver's concerns. And so, I think, I think I would say is that, I think what the committee is saying is to do sort of, we hope that you do your fiduciary duty, right? That if the person comes in and their salary does warrant that level, that is where we would prefer to be, right? If we have an exceptional candidate who's already making that money and we need to go a little higher, I would be okay with it. But I think our default has to be the lower end of the salary range. We don't start from there. We start, we don't start from high, we start from low. That would be my personal preference. Ms., Ms. Wade?
I was just adding, you know, I think the other acknowledgement is that, you know, we're really expanding our role here to, you know, certainly, we're, we're filling up this gas line. I know we talk about vertical articulation and that's something that's a gap. But also, there's a big PR component and that, you know, if you look at New Bedford, they're hiring their own PR people. And these folks are actually, you know, and setting up a separate role for them. And these folks are actually like taking on that role as part of this job description, which is significant here. Because I think we've all acknowledged that this is a, a space that we wanna, you know, improve upon. So, again, just, you know, when we think about this, it's not just about the curriculum piece. It is this other, you know, significantly like PR, you know, reaching out to the community piece. And so, it, there is that other kind of new job that, you know, I don't know if that was part of the existing with Ms. Tracy's as much.
She and I pretty much do it.
Yeah. So, okay.
As for the PR piece, have we ever considered going with an outside PR firm?
It's my money.
It's actually not that bad. I've done my research. It's actually not that bad. And it takes a lot off people's plates.
True. It's true.
Other questions? So, we have our, our motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion about the job descriptions?
About the job descriptions?
That's the motion on the floor right now. We'll come back to the budget after we take care of that motion. All right, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. So, that motion carries unanimously. So, we have approval for those job descriptions. Now, we're back onto the budget. Are there other questions about the budget? Well, I'm waiting to see if anyone else does. I'm gonna ask a question, Mr. Kylie. So, I just wanna make sure I'm correct. We have about, it looks like in fiscal year twenty-two, a little around a million, a little over a million in salaries on our ESER grant. Right? And that's, that's about what we're, we're saying, same sixteen FTE, a little bit of salary increases. I just wanna highlight that because it is two percent of our budget, right? That, you know, come around fiscal year twenty-five, right? That ESER money's not there.
Yes.
That's sixteen people. It's a lot of people. And none of these people, I'm, because our, you know, our viewers might not see this, but they're special education teachers, facilitators, classroom teachers, social workers, guidance counselor, instructional specialists, teachers assistants, nurse, I mean, these are not like fluff, right? These are providing core educational services. They're necessary.
They're all necess- necessary positions.
Yeah, absolutely. That are being funded by grant money that was going to run out in a couple more fiscal years. So, I think we need to continue to highlight that. I don't, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be doing this, but I'm, I tend to be fiscally conservative and this, this makes me a little bit nervous. I know we have to do it. There's, that's the only way you can spend this money. It's not the only way, but realistically, there's only so much like after-school programs and this and that you can do. You really need people to do this work. But it puts us in somewhat of a precarious position. And I just wanna, wanna highlight that because it does make us a little nervous. I'm sure it makes Mr. Kylie nervous.
Yeah, we're nervous. We keep talking about it. Right.
It'll be exhausted in fiscal twenty-four.
Right.
So.
Two more years.
Yeah, well.
Two more fiscal years.
One more budget year, because we're talking '23. So it's really only one more budget year, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll do our best to mitigate, um, the impact. But it, it's going to happen regardless of our best efforts, there, there will be an impact at the end.
Yeah, I mean, unless, right, the dreaded word, right? You're looking at likely an override, because I don't think that the, the, the town can simply absorb that. It would be cuts elsewhere in the town budget, which, it's not like there's a lot of fat in the town budget either. So it's, it's just an issue that, um, I think we just have to remind people that, that we're going to have to do something about this. Um, I appreciate, though, the detailed, um, information on, on where that money is going.
Yeah, that was helpful.
Does anybody have any other questions about the budget?
That was my point, too, so.
Alright, so we don't have any other, um, we don't have to take action on the budget tonight, correct?
Right.
So let's talk, can you remind us of the schedule again? I think it's just good for the public to hear that.
It is. So, um, our next meeting, on the 21st, will, uh, be a school committee meeting in which you can deliberate more on the budget. But it will also be our, our budget hearing.
Okay.
So it'll be an opportunity for the public to opine and, you know, and, um, so, you know, we're looking forward to that, of course. And, um, from there, uh, we originally thought we'd have a joint meeting. That's not going to be happening in April with the Select Board, which is probably good from a budget perspective, in that you'll have the opportunity to decide when you're going to vote. It could be that next meeting after the public.
Okay.
Budget hearing. And that's what it's scheduled for, but it doesn't mean it has to be. Yeah, and then we'll move forward from there. And, um, like I said, they did reach out to us regarding the Finance Committee, but I want to be sure that, you know, you folks have your say before.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Before we go before them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next on our agenda is, uh, new business, the superintendent's update.
Okay. It's funny, because Evan did such a nice job. Ross, I always ask the principals, any little tidbits you want me to share tonight? So Ross sent me things he, he thought Evan was not going to share, but Evan was all over it, so. Um, he did mention about the eighth grade coming to this high school tomorrow. Also, it's, uh, let's see, I've got a, not a date, but yes, um, the counseling department here also goes to the middle school to talk about, uh, class scheduling, et cetera, so. And also, we talked today that, uh, he is going to plan a parent night, an eighth grade parent night, so, which will be good. Probably the first week in April, so grade eight kiddos can come. But everything else Evan talked about for the high school, so that was good. Um, and if you notice, I did send you today a link for the TEDx, in case you wanted to watch it, but it's postponed. So that date that I sent was, we found out later, as Evan said, it was postponed. So a couple of other things that are happening, uh, planning, we're already planning for K through 12, re, summer reading. And once again, we'll be focusing on Voice and Choice. The last few years, it's been going really well. The teachers, or everyone throughout the district, I know even Ms. Gunther participates as a, as a facilitator of a book. And you can offer out a book, and, and the kids get to choose, as we always, I joke, I stopped, because two years ago, not one kid picked my book. So that was it, I said, that's it, I'm not doing it again. Anyway, the second session of the sale program began last week, and with new offerings. We received overwhelming positive feedback, uh, through a survey that we did from parents, et cetera. Said that kids really loved school, and, and had a great time doing the projects and all of that. So we look forward to another wonderful session for that. We are, we just began advertising for Help for Camp Invention, which will start off again this summer. So it's nice to see things begin to, you know, be, begin again. Uh, that will be the week of June 27th through July 1st. Oh, that's my mother. Um, at the high school. I did attend the AASA conference last week, and, uh, well, I guess it was the week before already. And a lot of the sessions, as you can imagine, were focused on social, emotional learning. I did come away with some, um, a great site, uh, group, Cook, Cook, um, it's a Cook organization, and it's really about mental health and preventing teen suicide. And so I've reached out to them, there are free resources, free courses for parents, but I want to prove, um, not just throw it out there for folks, say, here, take a look at this kind of, I've asked if they could do like a virtual presentation for our admin, our social workers perhaps, and that we can then share those resources, uh, with our staff, as well as, again, parents. And, um, it was really, really a good session, so we had that.
Or maybe with a youth advocate, too, that would be another.
Yeah, you know, it's a good idea. That's a good idea. Uh, we wrapped up the Accelerated Math Academy in February. We had about 100 students that attended that. We'll be running that again in April. I was very pleased that we had some high school students jump in, which is, you know, not always the case. They don't want to deal with that stuff. Uh, Project Time recently met, again, in person, so that was nice. And again, you've, you've met the two, uh, teachers that are leading, helping facilitate those meetings. They've done a fabulous job. They, this session was discussing best practices for teaching after a pandemic, very relevant. Uh, Quinn shared, and I believe the other schools did too, is, they had Read Across America, where the kiddos could come dressed as their favorite character. Anne Potter will be running their, um, fun run next week, and they're hoping to match their $20,000 raise that they did previous year. Team Chair Training begins next week, I mentioned that last, uh, last meeting. Uh, we're providing a new training for new folks that are new to the district, as well as a review for some of the, uh, people that have already run chairs. It, things like role of the chair, uh, meeting regulations, working with advocates, et cetera. And then, of course, um, we are, you know, preparing for tomorrow night's meeting. I did have something I wanted to mention. I know you've all received, like, well over 500, probably 50 emails petition, uh, in, you know, um, supporting Keeping the Indian. But in, in looking at, someone asked me about minutes for the diversity meeting, which we said some have been approved and some have not. But in looking at that, um, I just wanted to bring something up, that the committee expired its appointments as of December 2021. So I became concerned with legal procedures of the subcommittee holding a meeting when the, their tenure expired, according to your minutes, um, in December. And I was, I became concerned about that. So I, I wanted to throw it out there, and, I know, I was just like, oh, I forgot about it. And it was a one-year appointment, so I, that was all I had. I, I leave it at that.
Thank you.
So I'll come back around to that. I just want to, for my, um, update, I just want to remind everyone, I think Mr. Oliver had asked us several meetings ago about the school committee sponsoring, uh, team.
Oh, yes.
So I will take the lead on getting the money into the Dartmouth Education Foundation. Or I've let them know that we are, we are committed to sponsoring a team. You all want to write the check for them, because it is tax deductible. So as opposed to me putting the check in.
So we can't Venmo you online?
I think you would all prefer to write the check to them. So, um, if you Google Dartmouth Education Foundation, it will tell you. Or you can give me the check written to them, and I can, I can give it to them. But that way you will all enjoy.
How much?
I believe it's.
Six, is it still 60 or 70?
It's 60, yeah, because there's five of us, 300. I'm doing the math.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
So it would be 60, um, write it out to DEF, give it to me, or you can give it to Mary, because Mary's also on the board. Um, and we can, we can make sure that they get it. They know we're good for it.
Also do it online, too.
Oh.
You can donate online.
Okay, and we know where to find you if, if we're not all, we're not all.
And please just remind.
Alright, so the second thing I want to talk about, um, is about the meeting for tomorrow night. I want to, um, clear, I do want to clear up some misinformation that's been circulating. At our last meeting, on the 24th, um, we had a conversation about setting up the dates for this. Um, I asked for help, um, you all agreed to help. Um, and so at the, we set the meeting for the 8th, for tomorrow night. I sent out an email, I think to Mr. Oliver, Ms. Gunther and Dr. Gifford were copied. I asked you to reach out to the Aquinawampanoag at the end of January. Um, and I took on reaching out to the Mashpee-Wampanoag and the Pocasset-Wampanoag. I know Ms. Gunther has also reached out to the Aquinawampanoag.
We've re, reached out specifically to, to Chairwoman Andrews.
Several times, right. And so there's been some misinformation circulating that they were not invited. They were invited, we have, we have reached out to them, we did, we did invite them. I reached out to my task, where to reach out to the Pocasset-Wampanoag and the Mashpee-Wampanoag, and they asked me what the parameters are. And I told them the same thing that would, would tell the, uh, I think I copied Ms. Gunther on this, right? 10 to 15 minutes, if you want to do it one person, if you want to do it three people, however you want, that's your time for that. So the Mashpee-Wampanoag have agreed to come, they have a tribal representative, the tribe has voted officially on the issue. They have a representative who represents the tribe's position on the mascot. Um, she will be coming along with the Chair of the Mashpee-Wampanoag tomorrow evening. Megan Runningdear Page, who is a member of the Pocasset-Wampanoag, has asked to come as a representative of the, uh, Pocasset-Wampanoag Tribal Council. They have also voted, I, I told her the same thing, 10 to 15 minutes, however you want to divide that up, that's up to you. Several members of the Aquinawampanoag reached out to me, including a former Chair of the Aquinawampanoag. They noted that the Aquinawampanoag has not taken an official position, the tribe, on the issue of mascots. So there's no official position.
Can I correct you, Madam Chair, it's not a mascot? Uh, I'm ti, I'm, it's not a mascot.
It's a symbol.
The symbol.
It's a, it's not a mascot.
That's fine, the, uh.
There's no one running down the field.
That's fine, the symbol, whatever we would like to call it, the symbol. The Aquinawampanoag have not taken official position on this. And so that those members of the Aquinawampanoag wanted me to represent there, or to articulate that there is no official tribal position. One of the members of the tribe, given that the tribe has no official position, asked if he would be able to present at this meeting, at the meeting tomorrow. Given there's no official tribal position, I said yes, because there is no one to represent the tribe, because the tribe does not have an official position yet. Um, there is some misinformation circulating that this person is a representative of the Aquinawampanoag, he's not. He's an individual who asked to speak, and I said yes. That is the only request I received from a member of the tribe to speak at tomorrow's meeting, outside of the invitation that we extended, um, to the Chair. So I just want to say that I did not invite someone else to speak as a representative of the tribe. That person contacted me and asked me to speak after several members of the tribe articulated that the tribe has no official position. And no person is, is empowered to speak for the tribe. So, right now, we have the Mashpee-Wampanoag lined up to come tomorrow, the Pocasset-Wampanoag lined up to come tomorrow. I have told some people who are in support of keeping the symbol, they want to have other people speak. And I said I have not been empowered by my committee to do that. So I have not invited those other people who have articulated a desire to speak at our meeting to come to speak. If this committee so directs me to not invite Mr. Loaves, that is the prerogative of the committee. I am not, I am a, a member of this committee, and I will follow the decisions of the committee. But I can't have these conversations outside of meetings, because it's a violation of open meeting law.
Sure.
And so I'm trying to do the best that I can, um, with the requests that are coming to me within the parameters that we established, which were the Mashpee-Wampanoag, the Aquinawampanoag, and the Pocasset-Wampanoag, and one representative. The National Congress of American Indians did not respond. The North American Center, the North American Indian?
Massachusetts.
Center of.
Northeast.
It says North American Indian Center of Boston.
Correct. Asked, they represent several tribes, they asked to speak. I said yes, because this is an organization representing multiple tribes, as we had slotted. Again, if the committee has a problem with that, I can make changes, but I can't have that conversation outside of, of a meeting.
Sure.
Um, and I'm just trying to do the best I can within the parameters that have been set up for the committee. So I think the first issue that we need to tackle is the question about the Equality Committee, the Diversity and Equality Subcommittee, um, and their appointments. I would be inclined to extend their appointments, so that they can attend tomorrow's session. But that is a decision that we all have to collectively make.
I mean.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would say, yes, we should extend, you know, especially since they really haven't met. You know, just given the, the limitations of COVID, I would say, you know, certainly extend, and then we can, you know, step back and reevaluate. That would, on, on that, if we're dealing with that topic first, I would say yes, I would, you know, think that we would extend them to the remainder of the school year. You know, and then we can reeval, reevaluate, so since some of that work, you know, has been done, but.
Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question to that would be, um, do we know that everyone wants to continue their appointments?
I have, we emailed, I will, the only thing I can say in response to that is that we emailed everyone, the committee, Ms., uh, Amrell, forwarded the agenda to the committee. No one indicated any intention or desire to step down. Um, and from what I have heard from people, again, I, not everyone communicates with me, they plan on attending the meeting tomorrow. So from what I've heard, they, I have not heard anyone say they do not intend to continue. I, I'm, go ahead, Ms. Amrell.
I mean, I would, uh, I would be inclined to at least extend to this next meeting, having we, we, you know, we haven't met on a regular basis, but for no real reason other than life was crazy, COVID. And it, I think we need to be sort of gracious about the fact that there was no, uh, other reason we didn't meet, or weren't consistent, or weren't up to par with, um, uh, attempting to be right and correct. And, you know, I can't think of the words right now. But I would be inclined to say, my, my opinion is that we should at least extend it throughout, through this meeting, and perhaps it would have to be on a future meeting agenda to.
So what, thinking about our meeting schedule, we're meeting tomorrow, we could extend it for a week, two weeks.
Right.
Then our next individual meeting is the 15th.
Okay.
So at tomorrow night's meeting, if we extended it for a week, we could ask the question that you asked, because the committee will be there in open session, whether or not people would like to attend. Or we could say, notify us by the end of the week if you do not want to continue.
I'm, I'm mixed. I'm certainly mixed, just based on the, um, the growth that this has taken on in the community. And I would just, legally speaking, are we in the parameters of the law to just extend it? Just to reappoint at the day, but, just to reappoint the committee?
I don't think there's any, there's any legal principle that prevents us from doing that.
So if we establish the committee?
We establish the committee, we establish the membership.
I don't know, I mean, that's.
We did. Mr. Noots?
I'm against, no disrespect, I am against extending that, uh, at this point in time, that committee's, uh, appointment, whether it be for a day or a year, or two years, at, at this point in time. Number one, their actual t, term, per se, has expired, type of deal. Number two, at the 11th hour, we're trying to have a discussion on this to say, do we want to extend it? Number three, uh, we have nothing in writing from any of those, uh, participants that they wish to have it extended, so that we can, uh, see who wishes to extend their appointment. And number four, more importantly, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't know how many meetings you've had as a committee. I, I don't know that, but I'd like to know who was at the meetings. Now, I know there were a couple, as I look at, uh, looks like you, there's a couple of, as I'm looking at the agenda for tomorrow night, there's a couple of sessions in the summertime, and that's tough to get everybody together with vacations, and I, I understand that. I don't know if you had any meetings before that, type of deal. So as to, you know, what the, what the attendance was at tho, at those meetings, to see whether or not, and, again, there are no parameters to say, you know, you have to make 75% of the meetings to be in good standing and, and such. So, i- in, you know, is there anyone else in the community that may want to step in? So that's, that's my concern at this point in time.
I will just note that as of, as of an hour ago, we were all quite willing to have a meeting with these members of the committee tomorrow. Right? And so I think for at least one day, we ought to extend, um, and have the invitation that we extended to them, so that they can attend this meeting. If we don't want to continue beyond tomorrow, I think that's fine. But we were all okay with, with them continuing on. Ms. Amrell?
Yeah, and to, to John's question, uh, all of the meetings that we've had, the few meetings that we've had, were all posted publicly, and are available to be seen on YouTube. One meeting I was unable to make, I actually just sort of watched it from afar.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
But, um, so, and they were well attended. But, so, and they were well attended, but it certainly is a great idea to revisit reforming. I mean, there are other issues that that committee should be tackling, in addition to the one that was scheduled to be discussed tomorrow. And I, I just think it would be unfair to, you know, it, nobody said, hey, I'm done with that committee, and we've sent the meeting the minute that it was posted. There, there's no shady dealings going on there, to clear up some other misconceptions that are being discussed in the community. But I would, I would personally like to at least extend it through tomorrow, and certainly revisit, so that other folks, I have other things to contribute to that committee, but I am more than happy to step away, and to allow someone else to sit in and represent those same, you know, where I, what I bring to it, other folks can, can equally bring to it. But I feel that it's sort of in, it's, it's happening, it was scheduled. I think it's unfair, and I don't know why we wouldn't want to just move forward with it. But I agree that perhaps other folks would want to serve on that committee, you know, for another, for the next term, perhaps. Sorry.
No, I was just gonna make a motion that we extend it until our next school committee meeting.
A second.
Extend, extend the terms of the existing members of the diversity.
I second that motion.
All right, so I have a motion by Ms. Wade, I have a second by Ms. Amaro. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. Nuns.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing against the members of that committee, or anything of, of that nature. I'm just talking procedural-wise and such.
Understood.
No, you know, I mean, there, we all go 29/7, 450 days. Okay?
Yeah.
I got that type of deal. So it's nothing against, it's just a procedural way.
Yeah. I, I would also say that I think that we should officially put this on the agenda for the 15th. So.
21st.
21st. Sorry, my bad. My dates are mixed up. But that we put, we have, we put on the agenda a discussion of the terms, and how we're going to reappoint, and what we're going to do for that. I, I, we can ask, we can ask tomorrow night if people would like to continue, but we can also tell them, it doesn't guarantee that they're going to be able to continue, because we will be having that discussion on the 21st.
Okay.
If this motion passes.
And if, to send a letter that says, or an email to, to Ms. Gunther, or someone that says, I'd like to stay, I'd like to stay on the committee, just so that we have something in writing.
Okay. All right, we can, we can say that tomorrow evening. So other discussion on the motion. Ms. Gunther?
Meeting on the 22nd, so just to let you know.
Yes, but we'll have a discussion again on the 21st about how we want to proceed, so we'll figure that out. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, so that motion carries three to two. All right, next, moving on to the meeting for tomorrow evening, I do need some direction from the committee about how to proceed, where to go, what to do. So, so far, we have the Pocasset Wampanoag have confirmed, the Mashpee Wampanoag is confirmed. We agreed to that at our last meeting. The Aquina Wampanoag, we have one individual who has asked to speak. The tribal chair has not confirmed. We had one organization that we authorized, they couldn't make it. There's another organization that we could, that has asked if they can speak. So let me take those in order. With respect to the Aquina, I think we should proceed with a meeting tomorrow evening, because we have people who have agreed to attend. The question I would ask the committee is whether they would like to schedule an additional meeting for the Aquina Wampanoag to come speak, if they cannot make it on the 8th. That's one option that, that we could have on the table. Ms. Wade?
Just, you know, in light of, you know, a, a letter that we all received today from Mr. Ventura, you know, again, and, and understanding that there isn't unanimity within the Quinna, is it possible, because to invite him to speak also tomorrow night, as part, during that timeframe that we have set aside, those 15 minutes for the, again, we have one person that's coming in from one, you know, perspective. We know that he's strongly in favor of the, the logo, the iteration name. So, again, since we had extended that invitation, understanding or hoping that there was going to be uniformity, since that's not the case, and we're proceeding with Representative of the Quinna, it seems that it would be, that are opposed to maintaining the logo, it seems fair to also include him. That's, that's just, you know, my, my thinking, is that way we could extend the invitation. We have this letter that, you know, it demonstrates that, you know, again, that he feels that that viewpoint is not being reflected. It represents a certain segment of people in Dartmouth, who are, you know, align themselves with the Quinna. So again, just as, I know it's kind of coming out, he might say it's to last minute, but, again, reflecting on that, reflecting on the fact that we don't have a unified view from the Quinna, it seems a way to proceed, understanding that we're giving each of these nations 15 minutes to speak, within that 15-minute timeframe.
I will also say, I want to be clear, that I did tell the chair of the Aquina, that having someone else from her tribe would not diminish her speaking time.
Okay, but that's good, that's good to know, too.
Right? I mean, she is afforded 10 to 15 minutes. So it's not like they've got to fit pro and con into 10, 15, their own.
Oh, no, sure, sure. Okay.
So she would, if he would like to come, he would be afforded the same full 10 to 15 minutes. Ms. Amaro?
So, I just want to clarify, Ms. Andrews has not responded to the invitation?
She has not confirmed attendance.
Correct.
Oh, so she may be attending, we just don't know. Of course, we want her to. I was wondering if she wasn't speaking because of, that they haven't, like, she, she could speak a personal opinion, but she, is it, and I was wondering if it was a situation that she couldn't speak on behalf of the tribe. As you say, no one person can, if they haven't brought the issue. I hope she does.
I think, you know, and I, I can, certainly cannot speak for a sovereign nation, for any sovereign nation, but I, I think there's certainly some concern with the Aquina tribe, Aquina Wampanoags, coming during this meeting, where there's more than just the two federally recognized tribes here. That's just my takeaway. I, I don't think there's, and, you know, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think that there's certainly some concern within their sovereign nation about coming to speak, speak at a, at a forum, where there's going to be other people here besides federally recognized tribes, in which I, I understand all the ancestry tests and everything, and the, the time it takes to do that. So, in respecting, you know, the chairwoman Andrews, I, I can certainly understand her, her hesitation. And I have not spoken to her, I've just, I've, I've heard this through, through other members of the tribe.
I will also say, I have heard from the past chair of the Aquina Wampanoag, and she has indicated to me that that is not an issue, from her perspective. So, it is not necessarily the position of the full nation.
There's, I'm not going to disagree with you, Madam Chair. However, there is certainly, you know, controversy within every nation, sovereign nation, the United States.
Absolutely. I just want to be clear about that.
And this is just, no, this is just another, just another politicization in society right now, unfortunately.
Mr. Nuns.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Personally, with all due respect, I mean, you know, it's Bristol County and Cape Cod and that, we have the Mashpee and Pocasset coming, type of deal. I'm not exactly sure what North American Indian Center of Boston is going to bring to the table, type of deal. It, you know, I'm not trying to throw any water, or anything on, I don't know of them, and such. I'm not a political sci- no disrespect, political science person, or somebody that gets into, into the weeds on these things, but, you know, bringing someone down from Boston, and, you know, they represent a couple of other, I think you said they represent a couple of other tribes, or such. I, I'm not quite sure what they would, would bring to the table with the, you know, the Mashpee, you know, the Aquina Wampanoags, or anyone down this neck of the woods. That's my, that's my take on the matter. So if, if, you know, we didn't have them, I would not be upset, or anything of that nature.
Good. I'll just follow up. The reason why I said that, is I received requests from several other tribes that have been recognized by the state, some of which we visit when we play athletic competitions, to speak. And I didn't, I don't think we wanted to have, I think there was five or six other tribes that, that have, have sort of inquired about this. And so I felt like the, that organization representing that group would be more succinct. You don't have to agree with me, the committee doesn't have to agree with me, that's my reasoning. But I, I need, I do need direction on how to proceed. Ms. Amaro?
Nope, I was, no, I think I was, you know, starting, but that's where I was thinking is, because we are going into other communities, so that is, you know, is important for us to understand how, you know, it's being understood outside of Dartmouth. That was, you know, where I would see the, you know, the usefulness.
So, I need direction from the committee, if they, we like to change for tomorrow evening? Do we want to schedule an additional meeting? I will also say, with respect to Mr. Ventura, I've, I've had some conversations, and Mr. Pereira, with Ms. Murphy, who's on the Equality Subcommittee, about arranging the meeting for the 22nd. And one of the things I think that we would like to do, while it is for public comment, I think we would like to invite someone from each side to open, and represent the position of, and have a more extended time to talk at that public comment. Right? I think we do need to put time limits on people, because if people talk for 10 minutes, we'd, we'd be there till 2:00 in the morning, or, or we're not going to hear from very many people. But I don't think, I think two minutes is enough to hear a few things, but I do think we may have, so, another option to think about is to invite Mr. Ventura or Mr. Pereira to be the opening speaker, right?
Yeah.
For that side of the debate. We can invite them tomorrow, but then also on the 22nd, to be, and to give them the 10 to 15 minutes, right? That would be the same as, as what happened here. So, I think we should do that regardless of what happens tomorrow. That was another thing I wanted to sort of ask you about, I want to stay focused on the 8th, before we get to the 22nd. But I just want to throw that out there, that that, I think, is an option for an extended period of time to speak about that position. Ms. Amaro, do you have your hand up?
My, my, I'm withdrawing my hand.
Okay, so Mr. Nuns, go ahead.
I don't know about anybody else, but we've got the meeting on the 22nd, which is, which is fine. I've kind of blocked that date off my calendar, we've got the 21st, and the, but I don't have, with all due respect, I have no other time the rest of the month. I'm straight out.
Hmm?
Okay, it's unfortunate, it's my busiest time of the year right now, so.
Retired.
Yeah, I'm retired. And, you know, once I get by April 19th, I'll be good. But, so, you know, we're doing tomorrow night, and we're going to do the 20, you know, we've got our school committee meeting on the 21st, we've got that meeting on the 22nd. That's good. I'm, I'm, personally, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Huh?
And the spelling.
And we got the spelling, yeah. But.
No, but I.
So.
But, as, as far as an agenda, like on the 22nd, type of deal, whoever wants to come, God bless them, they're more than welcome to come, it's an open meeting.
Correct.
I would give them three to five, personally, I'd give them three to five minutes, max.
I'm talking about, the, the people in the audience, I think we're, I think two to three, I think is sufficient.
And I'm good.
But I do think that having someone who represents either side to sort of start off, close off, I don't know, would be a good thing, because I know Mr. Pereira and Mr. Ventura have put a lot of effort into this, and so to give them the space and time to talk about, and to not say two minutes.
No, no, I'm not.
I think would be appropriate on the 22nd.
Yeah. No, no, I, I.
But everyone else, two minutes.
I, I was going back, I was going backwards on that. I knew you had talked earlier about if, if they, you know, somebody opening up and getting their.
Right.
You know, 10 to 15 minutes. I was, I'm, I'm good with that, but, you know, the people in the audience.
Everyone else, two minutes.
Two to three minutes, I'm good with that, too. That's fine.
All right, Ms. Amaro?
My hands back up, because my comment was similar to the 22nd. I, I do, in terms of like parameters around that, I agree that there needs to be a set limit, but similar to how you testify for something at the State House, I think it's helpful if we sort of hold their hands a little bit, or allow those people who are representing the sides. I cannot stand talking that way, because I, I, the division is really just making me sick. But, you know, 340 words on a paper, literally, is going to take your time, that, you know, to spell it out for them, to say no more than 350 words on your paper. And if you and your friends have something similar to say, then perhaps you pick one of you to come up, because, like, receiving 500 of these emails, we use them, phone to action for my work. We, we have action alerts all the time, we allow for some personalization that these didn't. So when I see one, I see 50, I see 100, I see 500, to me, it's all one, it's like a generic kind of spewing out of the same commentary. So if they're going to come on either end, and say the same thing for or against keeping the image, I think that it's, it's not a good use of all of our time. I think that if there could be a coordinated effort to have a spokesperson, and perhaps.
And I think, I think that's what I would, I think it would make sense to have people who are invested to be the spokesperson, but also then the, then the community where you get, that's where you get your two minutes. And I think 340, is 340 words, two minutes?
I could give you the accurate, I think that's three minutes, to be honest, but.
So we can, we can, we can perhaps provide some instructions.
So I just want to clarify, on the 22nd, are we in the auditorium? Because I know on the 22nd, the after-prom is scheduled as planning 6 o'clock, and I would just think it would be a huge bottleneck if we tried to do that in here, the 22nd. So I'm assuming that we'd be the auditorium with, I mean, that seems to be.
Mr. Parati has a huge problem with that. That's the only thing.
We cannot fit in here on the 22nd. There's no way.
You can't do all of virtual streaming, and live.
And then, then we may have to give some of that up, because I think we need, I think we need to have the space for people to be able to attend this meeting.
I think it's going to be tough, otherwise you're going to have people in the hallway, this bottleneck here.
So I think, I think for the 22nd, I think we need to be in the auditorium.
Yeah, I agree.
It's not going to be everything, and that's fine. People are just going to have to, if they want to voice their opinion, they're going to have to show up.
Yeah.
They can see it online, but we have to do the 22nd in the auditorium. I think there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. So, let me sort of summarize real quick. On the 22nd, we've decided auditorium, opening speaker on each side, and what, I think what we would like to do is to have two separate podiums. So we make sure that there's some alteration.
Just, just a thought.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know they have town meeting here, maybe we should look at getting DCTV for this event.
Yeah.
Because they can stream, they can go live on cable versus the streaming, and then they also, they do town meeting with the two different microphones going back and forth, you know.
I, I think that makes sense. I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, no disrespect to what Mr. Parati's doing.
He does a great job, but this is.
Phenomenal.
Yeah. We got, we got to be in there, and we got some stuff in, I think you're right.
We've got to be able to.
It's a really good idea.
If, if they're available, I hope, I hope DCTV.
Can, Ms. Gunther, can you see if, if they will be available on the 22nd? That's a good idea. And then we'll do two to three minutes after that. And I think we also need to say, this is the time at which the meeting shall end. Right? We're going to say, we're, we start at 6:30, we're done at 8:30?
8:30.
8:30, 9 o'clock, maybe 8:30, right? And we, we say, sorry, if you want to get up and talk, get up and talk first, because we're not going to stay till midnight.
And you have every, everybody speaks once, before somebody comes back and speaks again.
Agreed, agreed.
I would say, you only get, you only get one shot at the apple, but we can, we can
allow two, if, if, if there is time.
How it works.
Yes. Ms. Amaro?
I don't know if we have the infrastructure to facilitate this, but I think it would be useful, if we do the math, we figure out a minute up and down the, you do the math, figure out how many folks we can have speak on either side, and that first come, first served. If you're here, you know, the first 60 people on either side speak, kind of thing. Where, I, I just feel like there's going to be a bottlenecking, and, and already the emotional kind of, I don't want it, I want it, I, I'm worried about what this is setting up for.
Mr. Nuns.
Now I'm a little bit confused, but that's okay. So you're, we're talking about having two microphones, or two podiums.
Correct.
That, that type of deal. That, that type of deal. But is one going to be for and one going to be against, or is everybody?
I think we do.
Whomever gets, I could be for and I'm on this podium here, but I could also be for and be on that podium, depending where I'm sitting.
I think we should do for and against. And if we run out of, say, for or against, then the other podium keeps going, or we can see the balance. So I think, I think that allows for some, some balance.
Do we take a look at and see what it looks like that night?
And we can also see if there's 50 people in one line and 10 people in another line, then maybe we do two and one.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just?
Ms. Wade.
Sorry, so at the end of this, I, I guess at the end of that meeting, what is the expectation? Are we then coming back at the next meeting and voting? Are we kind of hopefully crafting some sort of compromise? Are we, I guess, I'm trying to see like where, where, what is our next? Is it April 4th and we're making a decision? Is, are the diversity and equity folks who now may not be with us after the 22nd for that next meeting, will they, or whoever's, you know, part of that meeting, will they then be helping, sharing their opinions? I guess I'm kind of, you know, I think just to have a, a sense of like, where are we? Are we, are we coming on the 4th when there's, now we have this vote that's happening on the 5th? Are we voting on the 4th? You know, just, just so we kind of understand as a group, like what we're, you know.
I think we should have a conversation about that on the 21st.
Okay.
As part of the structure of the, I mean, this is not, this hasn't been on the agenda, so I don't want to get too far into that.
Well, either, either, either that or we have a, we have a discussion af, amongst, we have, as part of our meeting on the 22nd, we have a discussion.
Yeah, we could, we could, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that.
But I, I don't think we need to decide that this evening.
That's good, okay.
All right, so Tom, so I think we're, it sounds like we're pretty good on the 22nd.
Yep.
Tomorrow night. Mr. Nunes has articulated, I just want to be clear, you, you want Mashpee Wampanoag, Pocasset Wampanoag, and that's, you're good with that, right? I would like to hear from the rest of the committee about who else to speak. Ms. Wade.
You know, I think we've, I mean, my, my sense is, you know, I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that there's division within the Quinna. I think that, you know, clearly Dr. Gifford has reached out numerous times, and I think we've reached out to that community. It's, it's difficult. I don't think it's fair for us to say that, given the circumstance and everything else, to say that, well, you don't want to be in the same room as, you know, these other folks. I, I think we've given them the opportunity, I think tomorrow's it, like, and I'd like to say we can, you know, consider, you know, including Mr. Ventura. But again, like I, you know, we're, you know, maybe expand that invitation. I know it's last minute, but I don't think we should have a separate date. I think we've got to kind of, you know, again, we've, we've done what we can, and I don't think there's a lot of appetite for, you know, anyone to kind of push this out, like, much more. So I, just, just being thoughtful, I, I think we've, we've tried. You know, a lot of people put a lot of heart into this, you know, and, and there's a lot of emotion, and I think we've got to kind of move forward, so.
Ms. Amaro, did you have your hand up, or?
No, I, I don't have strong feelings either way. I can, I can, I can see where you're coming from, I see where John's coming from. I, I don't, I don't really have any strong feelings about the other, you know. I just wish, wish it wasn't so divisive. And, you know, as a community, especially after what we've gone through these last couple of years, it would be refreshing to see just a different kind of scenario that's playing out in our community. It's discouraging, disheartening. But I'm, I, what the committee's pleasure is, is we're all kind of go with this one in terms of planning for tomorrow.
So I need to, I need to email Mr. Lopes and the North American Center for this evening. What do I email them? They have both indicated that they would like to speak. I would like to hear them speak. I would also like if Mr. Ventura or any one of the other members of the tribe, or, or all of them that sent us a letter are able to come tomorrow, they're welcome to come. I don't know if anybody is in contact with any of them. Mr. Oliver, would you be able to reach out to Mr. Ventura?
Can certainly try to reach out to some, one of the, some of them.
So what I would say is that I would extend the same invitation, as many of them that would like to speak in 10 to 15 minutes to articulate their position as members of that tribe.
Okay, I will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so that, I think we've worked through the issues around that. And so now I have no other items for the chair to speak about. Do others have items they wish to speak about? Ms. Wade.
Okay, so one of my questions, again, I know that I had reached out to Dr. Gifford, I was going to reach out to Ms. Oliver about getting that list of curriculum pieces. So if that, I mean, I think I have a fairly solid handle, but it would be helpful to know, for example, you know, do all fresh, so this is regarding like what we actually cover when it comes to Native American history beyond the third grade, which is excellent. I know that we do part-time Indian, and I think, you know, I don't know if there are projects that are done, and like, and if that's done across ninth grade or just within. And of course, within the American history courses, you know, there's quite a bit that's done around the Trail of Tears. I don't know if that's tied back into, you know, specifically Russell's Garrison and everything that's involved, you know, with King Philip's War, and how much we cover that in the high school. Just looking at the AP curriculum, because I've been, you know, we go over the Dawes Act and the Indian Reorganization Act, and certainly, you know, Jackson's policies, but we don't like really, so again, I'm just curious to see, like if we, you know, if we can kind of look at that and, you know, think, because that's a big question that keeps coming up, is if we're truly honoring, what are we doing in the curriculum? And I also think in all fairness, those new social studies standards came out 2019. We were dealing with COVID, so we have to give everybody a lot of grace on this. But if, you know, I think it's important that we can answer, this is what we're doing, it'd be great, you know, maybe we can add this, we have some amazing, like, rich local history too, you know, all throughout this town, like, related to that. So again, just, just, you know, just kind of thinking that through.
Well, she did, as I said to you, we follow the mass standards. And so many of them talk all through the grade levels about, grade, grade three is the one specific, specific to the local history, et cetera, et cetera. But all of the others, I just, you know, a couple of samples, culture, religion, education, civics, but they all have something in them about, and what the teachers can bring into it. There was something else you had just mentioned.
There was self-selected civics projects in eighth grade. Some of those kids are actually like, have been, you know, invested in, but those are self-selected. So, and just, just again, I think it's important that we talk about this, you know, you know, if, you know, as a community, we make the decision to keep this image and, and keep this name, then, you know, what does this partnership look like? What does this look like in terms of education? And then, and if we don't, what does that look like in terms of education? So that's an important component that I think is.
She did have a conversation with the teacher leader at the high school as well as Saradicas, who's overseeing all the curriculum at the middle school. And they basically said the same things, you know, just, yeah.
Okay, well, good.
Yeah.
I think that's helpful to know and have some sort of, but again, we could.
You had a good sense of it.
Okay, thanks.
Other, Mr. Nunes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A few good things. Mr. Paradi was kind enough, those of us that were here early, to, as I say, to people, give us the nickel tour of his rebuilt media center computer lab in there.
Control room.
Control room, whatever. You know me and computers. And boy, it's nice, you know, as, as I said to him, it's kind of like you watch on television and they'll show a picture of a control room of a program. And, you know, there's 20 monitors and 50 people working. Absolutely great for our students to, to be able to do that. And I know, Evan talked about the students going up to Harvard to, for training there. And he was, Mr. Paradi was talking about going down to URI in the next couple of weeks to, to take a look at theirs. So that, that is, I said, I know our winter sports teams, and again, was talked about, but good luck to our hockey team Thursday night and our Decker kids. Our spring sports are going to be starting, which is good. It is nice to see everybody's face.
Exactly.
It is wonderful type of deal. And last but certainly not least, just a reminder about the Music Association, the Music Department's NSBA show on Saturday, the 19th.
Sure.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's the only place it can be, you know. That type of deal starts at 12:00 noon with our JV color guard, our winter guard. They're going to conclude somewhere around 4:00 o'clock, the color guard portion of it. The awards right after that, then the percussion takes over. Our winds are on, I believe, around 7:00, and percussion at 7:30 or vice versa. I'm not quite sure. And then awards right after that. So, you know, great opportunity to come and see students from all over New England, you know, from, you know, New Hampshire, Connecticut, you know, down the Cape, Rhode Island type of deal to, and have a wonderful day. So that's what I have.
Mr. Nunes, you had asked if we could, if someone could come. I am unavailable that day. Just you mentioning that.
Yeah.
I have another appointment, so I just remembered that, and if I went home, I would have forgotten it. So I'm going to tell you that now. So I apologize, but I have another, I have another commitment. All right, other issues? All right, so hearing none. So technically, our next meeting is tomorrow night at 6:30 here in the Library Media Center. And, and just so, I think, you know, this one other before I let, let you go is, one of the things we were thinking about is depending on crowd, we're likely going to have to set up a live stream in the auditorium. If there's many people here, I mean, we, you know, so we might, we might try to do is reserve the seats for the people who are coming to speak. And there'll be a live stream for sort of overflow in the auditorium if that is necessary. But just, I want to sort of get that out there if anyone's watching tonight, because if they can't come till late, they may as well just be at home and watch live stream there. So we have limited capacity here, we will have extended capacity on the 22nd, but tomorrow night it will be, if you, if you can't fit in there, you're going to have to go into the auditorium for a live stream.
I, I believe that's how the agenda read.
Yes. Okay, I just, okay, Jen, I just want to make sure that people are aware of that because not everyone reads the agenda. So I'm just going to state that. So our next meeting is tomorrow, and then our next regular meeting of the school committee is on the 21st. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by everyone. Now we'll pick Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I oppose, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.